There's a private company that now handles refuse removal in the village.
Right.
So this resolution is to introduce local law number one of 2021 that would repeal those four chapters of the village code in their entirety. And then sets the public hearing, which you have to have a public hearing for. I just picked the next regular board meeting, which I believe is August 11th.
Excellent, that's right.
And that's it. The notice is here. Sarah will put the notice or have the notice published in the paper. It's got to be at least five days prior to the public hearing.
So this is basically a resolution just for the board to agree for us to go to public hearing, okay?
Well, the, in the local law process, there are two stages. You have to introduce the local law. And you can either do that by physically handing it to the board members or mailing it to them. In this case, we're introducing it by resolution at the meeting. So that's physically handing the local law in its final form to the board members.
Okay.
And then, you know, the process is then you have to have your public hearing. You do have to go through seeker, you know, most cases, local law adoption is subject to seeker, and then you can enact the local law. So it would be introduce the resolution, or I'm sorry, introduce the local law by resolution this evening, hold a public hearing at your meeting on August 11th, conduct your environmental review, and then it's up to the board. But you can enact the local law by resolution at that, anytime after that.
So can we do, can we do the seeker thing also next, next month?
Correct. That's typically what you would normally do.
And so do I have to do anything for that, or who does the seeker?
The seeker, I'll prepare.
Oh, you prepare?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a, you know, I'll look at the individual, the amendments to the code that you're making. There are some that may fall under the category of a type two action, which is exempt from environmental review. But if it's not, it's usually an unlisted action. And I, I'll prepare a short form environmental assessment, form, and then, you know, the board can conduct its environmental review. I can take you through that. Ultimately, you know, usually ending up in a negative declaration issued by the board. And then, once that's done, the public hearing is held, you, you're free to do what you want, but.
Okay, so next meeting, we're going to have the seeker review. The board accepts, does the negative declaration, and then we have the public hearing. Close the public hearing, and then we can pass the local law.
Correct.
Okay. I want to do all of it at the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Typically, I would do public hearing first, but it doesn't matter that much. So it would be resolution of introduction tonight, advertise your public hearing at the August 11th meeting, open your public hearing, close it, conduct your environmental review, and then resolution of adoption.
Okay, good. All right, so tonight, we're going to do the acceptance of the resolution. So I called the meeting to order and made a motion for this resolution, seconded by...
I'll second.
Okay, good. Trustee Anson. And we move for the following resolution. Do I need to read all this? I think you've already described it.
I mean, I summarized it. I can summarize it again.
I think you just summarized it.
Yeah, that it's a local law. This resolution introduces proposed local law number one of 2021 to repeal chapters 51, 72, 122, and 190 of the village code.
Okay, we've been noted, we have been advised that we have to hold a public hearing, which we're going to do on August 11th. And can we now just take the vote?
Yeah.
Sarah?
What about, like, trustee, you guys?
You have to.
I said, I made a motion to enact or to offer the resolution, and trustee Anson second.
For setting the public hearing.
Yeah, I just said that, okay. Mayor Colopse advised the board trustees that pursuant to municipal home rule law, the state of New York, it was necessary to hold a public hearing upon this proposed local law. Mayor Colopse offered the following resolution, which was seconded by trustee Anson, who moved for its adoption. Whereas on July 14th, 2021, Mayor Colopse introduced this local law for the village of Millbrook, to be known as a local law repealing the, in their entirety, removing from the village code chapters 51, 72, 122, and 190. Aye.
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 Very good, thanks. That takes care of those five chapters.
Okay, one down.
The next one we've got is the local law regarding the repeal of the residency, actually, repeal of the discussion about a village justice from chapter 46 residency requirement. Right, and that's essentially what that's doing, right?
Correct. And again, Village of Millbrook no longer has a village court, and therefore, no longer has a village justice. And the portion of chapter 46, which contains the residency requirements, Article One deals with residency requirement for a village justice, that is now obsolete. And so, local law number two of 2021 repeals Article One of chapter 46, dealing with residency requirements for the village justice in the village code. And again, you can handle it the same way. That's a summary of it.
As with... Mayor Colopse made a motion for the acceptance of this resolution, 2021-010, for local law number two, which was to remove the reference to a village justice, which is no longer applicable. And that motion was seconded by?
I'll, I'll second it.
Deputy Mayor Herzog. I just summarized what it is. Mayor Colopse advised the board that pursuant to municipal home rule law, it will be necessary to hold a public hearing. Mayor Colopse offered that the following resolution, which was seconded by deputy mayor Herzog, who moved its adoption, whereas on July 14th, Mayor Colopse introduced this local law for the village of Millbrook, to be known as a local law repealing and removing Article One regarding village justice from chapter 46 residency requirement of village Public hearing will be held on August 11th, 2021, at six o'clock. A notice of said hearing, which should be published in the official newspaper of general circulation of Village of Millbrook, by the village clerk, at least five days before such hearing, and such notice shall be in the following form. Notice of public hearing, take notice. Do I have to read all this?
No, you.
No.
Okay, good. Okay. Aye.
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 Okay.
And then, local law number three. Just is local law number three of 2021, amending section 63-3 of the village code to provide that the fees for conducting an amusement shall be established annually by the village board of trustees. So I believe in the currently, section 63-3 of the village code sets forth what the fees are. My understanding was the intent is now to have the fees set annually by the village board with your other fees, and for the village code to contain a provision in section 63-3 that simply states that, that the fees will be determined by the, by the board of trustees.
Yeah, the code today has a section for amusements, has a section for bingo. All those things will be reviewed by the village trustees at the annual reorg meeting. And that basically gives us the flexibility to update those fees on an annual basis. So Mayor Colopse called the meeting to order. Mayor Colopse made a motion, seconded by trustee...
I'll second.
Anson, introduce the following proposed local law. Local law number three of 2021, a local law amending section 63-3 of the village code to provide the fees for conducting an amusement shall be established annually by the village board of trustees as follows. And then, this just gives the legislative intent that it's in our best interest that we have the fees reviewed on an annual basis outside of the code, so we can update them as appropriate.
And again, as with the prior two local laws, the board's going to conduct a separate public hearing on this proposed local law at your August 11th meeting.
Very good. Okay, Sarah?
Mayor Colopse?
Aye.
Trustee Anson?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, okay. Looks like pulling teeth when we got through it.
We're not quite there yet.
Yeah, you have one left.
Well, the one left is the one with the water and sewer hookup fee, right?
No, there's...
No, no.
There's another one?
Yes.
Local law number four?
Yep.
What is that? Oh, the ethics. Oh, yes, of course.
So, local law number four of 2021, this is resolution of introduction of local law number four of 2021. That will amend chapter 15 of the village code, dealing with your code of ethics, to provide that...
Well, here, let me tell you the story of that. We have in the code today, a chapter on ethics, which is out of date. Probably goes back to the eighties, I don't know, something like that.
Seventies.
Seventies, okay, fine. It's out of date. And we had a revision based on a template provided to us by New York State.
2013.
2013, but it never made it into the code. And what I'm proposing here is the following. The same thing we did with the procurement policy, which is we update the code to say that we have an ethics policy, and it's in our website, and looked at on an annual basis. That gives us the flexibility to update it as appropriate from year to year. All right? So the code's just going to say, we have an ethics policy, it's on our website, we review it annually, okay? And then, we have a separate policy that Mike has proposed, that I think we've all reviewed, that we're actually going to put into the website, that we can have that discussion later. This is just to discuss fixing the code, so we're given the flexibility to be able to update it as appropriate.
Right. And I sent, I sent the draft that was passed as a resolution to all the trustees, and I'm, you know, even though, even though I wrote it as a template in conjunction with NICOM lawyers and other people advising, you know, that was, as I said, seven years ago, eight years ago. So, you know, if the current board would like to make some changes, this would allow us to do that, you know?
So, do review it, and if you've got any concerns about it, or any insight in terms of how the ethics code should look, let us know. We will be reviewing it annually. But I looked at it, and I was very happy with the way it was set up, so.
And I thought it was interesting that I went to a meet, went to a CAC meeting last night, and the ethics codes for the town of Washington was brought up, and they're almost identical.
Oh, okay, fine.
The draft that I have is almost word for word what it is for the village, so.
So you can both follow the templates? All right, good.
Yeah.
Okay, so I need to introduce this?
Yeah, I can just summarize it. This is resolution to introduce local law number four of 2021 that will repeal the current sections 15-1 and 15-14, inclusive of chapter 15 of the village code, and replace it with a single section 15-1 that simply states that the village board, that the code of ethics of the village shall be as determined by the village board and reviewed annually.
Okay.
And again, the resolution sets the public hearing on this local law for August 11th. And that's it.
Good. So can we just take a vote now?
Yeah, well, you just need a board member to move, and then one to second.
I'd like to move that we accept this. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Deputy Mayor Herzog, a second. Can we get a vote?
Mayor Colopse?
Aye.
Trustee Anson?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Pretty exciting stuff. We got to do it, though. Thank you, Ian, for all the help there. Okay, the last resolution I have is something that Howard Schuman is looking for. Has Ian looked at this, or this is just, we use the template from before?
Uh, I haven't.
Yeah, okay, fine. Well, I'll go through it then. This is a resolution regarding the hookup and escrow fees for a town resident who's been pre-approved by a prior administration. Let me just read the resolution. We discussed it last, last meeting, this is just the formalization of that. Resolution 2021-013, whereas, at a duly convened meeting of the village of Millbrook Board of Trustees, the board has reviewed and hereby adopts the water sewer hookup and escrow fees for village and town residents. Connection fees also adopted only apply to non-village applicants that have been pre-approved by a memo from Mayor Hurley dated June 18th, 2010, which is attached. Number one, application fees for village and town. Water $500 plus a $500 bond, sewer $500 plus a $500 bond. Number two, escrow $5,000 to cover village-related and VRI-related inspection fees, engineering fees, and administrative fees, amounts TBD. Each application requires a stamped Dutchess County Health Department-approved site plan. Number three, connection fees for non-village pre-approved applicants. Homeowner pays all connection fees for each hookup, plus an additional $6,270 for water hookup, and $6,270 for sewer hookup, parentheses, assuming current rates for non-village water and sewer in a three-bedroom house. Connection fees are subject to adjustment based on the size of the project, parentheses closed. Therefore, be resolved, the above-mentioned water and sewer hookup connection and escrow fees will go into effect the date of this resolution, dated July 14th, 2021. Moved by Mayor Colopse, seconded by?
Me.
I'll.
Deputy Mayor Herzog. Can take a vote?
Mayor Colopse?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anson?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Howard? Okay. That's done. Okay, you're someone appreciates it, yes. Okay, fine. Okay, we're moving on. Any public comments? Okay, moving on. Board member updates, Deputy Mayor Herzog.
Okay, just a couple, couple of things first. I attended a CAC meeting last night, and we had a rather long meeting. Howard will be able to fill in any blanks for me, but we discussed a number of issues. And basically, I was there as liaison. My situation on the CAC is that I'm a non-voting member, according to the regulations of the town, but I am there to be a liaison for the village, so that they can be informed about certain properties that are subject to our regulation, because there's approximately 317 parcels, which by health law from 1992, we are subject to supervise for environmental factors. So that's why I'm sitting on the CAC. And the meeting last night went quite long, but I think it was, we had three new members who were sworn in previous to the meeting, and five members who were sworn in at the meeting itself. And we covered a lot of topics, from what is the intent of the CAC by discussion, all the way to, you know, what has happened in the last, in the last meeting of the planning board, and a review of what was asked for during those, during those discussions by the planning board. But nothing that would have direct impact on the village itself.
Okay, good.
So, before I move on with any other comments, Howard, is there something you wanted to add to that? Do you think that's an apt description, or is there something you wanted to? Yeah, I'm just saying, is it? Yeah.
Nobody's asking, do you have any more comments on the CAC meeting last night?
Beyond what I said with my description?
Okay, good. Okay. Good, good.
Okay. All right, the second, second part of my comments have to do with Shade Tree. And we had a meeting that we called yesterday among the present Shade Tree members, which would be Kevin McGrane, myself, and Bob Colacola. And we discussed a number of things. We, we talked about the location of eight stumps that are being ground through, out on a limb, that have been identified, and the locations of those stumps, to make sure that the Shade Tree Commission was aware. We looked at the current requests, if any, of village residents for tree plantings and tree removals. We looked at the Shade Tree Commission, Commission appointments that need to be done by, by the village board, because the bylaws that govern the Shade Tree Commission have now, by law, been separated into, and put into effect in the last few months through the, through our code revisions. So with that, we, I'm going to be asking the board to, to appoint new Shade Tree members that would be effective as of tonight, you know, and then what their terms of office would be and such.
And you say you want to make a motion tonight?
Yeah.
To recognize the board, the members on the Shade Tree Committee?
Yeah, to, well, to recommendation to the board to appoint, that's three, three members, and I'll get to that in a second, but that's second, okay? Also, we received, we received a letter from a resident, and she was concerned about protocols for improvements to our tree code, so we, we reviewed that letter, and we want to make a couple of recommendations to the board. The first was that certain suggestions that she gave was, we recommend that written notice be sent to residents before any tree removal on their property, after verbal notification concerning a potential dangerous tree, or a tree that we feel should come down due to condition. So that we make sure that there's first a verbal, a verbal notification and discussion with the owner of the tree on the property, and that's followed up by an actual letter that would go to, would go to the owner, so they would have a chance to respond and make sure that they are, we're aware that they've received the letter and are aware that there'll be a tree.
And this is regarding trees that are going to be taken down?
Yes. And that tree, just, just to clarify, that's not trees on people's property, on any part of their, big part of their property. These are trees that would be, that exist from 25 feet from the center line into an owner's property, that by law, we have, we have a right of way to be able to supervise those trees, and if we feel a tree is not being attended to by a property owner, be able to take it down ourselves. And we do get occasional requests from residents that say, I've got a tree that's within that guideline, would you come and take it down? So it has to be evaluated and looked at, and then we make that determination. And Bob Colacola has, for years, been patrolling the village and looking himself at trees that he considers in that guideway that would be, should come down, because he thinks they could be dangerous. So that's our, that's one recommendation.
A lot of times, the reason why we don't have many trees falling during storms is because you've been so much, much top of that, so I appreciate what you're doing there.
Yeah. The second, the second thing is that, in the letter, and with something that we're already doing, but wanted to be, make that clear, the Shade Tree Commission does make recommendations to the village board, not only on what trees to plant in terms of species of tree, but also where we feel the best locations for those trees are, and then make sure that they, the, the final vote on who gets to do that is the village board, not the Shade Tree Commission, but we make those recommendations, as well as making sure that, you know, that we get some kind of, some kind of review by the Shade, people on the Shade Tree Commission to be looking at any trees that Bob feels has to be removed, and would have us be able to do that. We are currently trying, because of our new bylaws, to fill two other positions, which would be what would be considered at-large positions. And those at-large positions, which is rather unusual, could be a village resident or a town resident, because those at-large positions, we're looking for people who, let's say, you could have a professional arborist, who is a village, village or town resident who would like to serve on the committee, and then be at our disposal to be able to make recommendations to Bob and to the rest of us on, you know, the condition of trees and, and trees that need to come down. But I just wanted to put it out there that those positions need to be filled, and if anyone from the town or the village would like to, would be interested in, you know, being able to serve on the Shade Tree Commission, they can send a letter of intent to the village clerk, and she will make that aware to the mayor, and then we'll go through the process of appointing someone as a village board to fill those last two positions.
So the request comes in to Sarah, she refers it to you, to the committee?
Well, to you, to the mayor. Yeah, because, because appointments are made by the mayor and by, with approval from the board of trustees, so.
I see, okay, fine.
So it's the same, when you're appointing anyone to any one of the...
All right, so a lot of interest comes to me?
Yeah.
Okay, fine, okay.
So that's fine.
I'll make reference to that in the next newsletter, then.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other, the other, the other thing is that there was in the letter a, a request that we apply for a, to the local urban forestry division for a, for a tree survey in the village. Just want to put it on record that I did apply for that in 2016, with the help of the Farm and Home Center, and with the, with the arborist from, with the arborist from, from DEC with help. And interestingly enough, we were turned down, and when I was given the phone call of that, no, we didn't make it, or we were turned down for the, for it, the, the arborist was on the phone with the person from that, from that division, and challenged it, and we found out that we should have gotten the money, but they scored the application incorrectly and said, try again next year. So, subsequent to that, Kevin McGrane is, has done a lot of research, and has, both he and I have taken some courses at Farm and Home Center to try to reapply. So that's something, when the next round of code comes up, that that's available, we are going to apply for a grant with the approval of the board to try to get that done. So, and that's, you know, that, that's, that pretty much covered all of the things.
Okay, so go back to, you said that the, the committee has reviewed, has identified the stumps that are going to be removed?
Yes.
Okay, so do the owners know about this, or are they notified of it, or what?
Bob, do we, do we, do we have a list? Are each of the people that...
How do we notify the owners that their stump's being removed, or?
Not yet, no.
Huh?
Not yet, no.
But you do?
We have it in comparison, we can't-
Oh, is that right? Okay, well, should we? I don't know.
Oh, that's a topic for discussion, is that, 'cause we, you know, that's something that the Shade Tree Commission reviews, but then again-
In general, I think people would want their stump taken out, right? The only question is that one person who's requested to have the stump removed, which we can't do, should, I think we should tell, I think we should tell either her or Vicki, you know, that the decision is to grind it, right?
Yeah, the owner.
Right. And I'd just like to have that communicated to Vicki. She can take care of discussing with the resident, just so the resident is aware of it. You know, if the resident came back and said, I wanna pull it out, we might have a problem with it. Anyway, just because of the damage to our road potential.
Yeah.
But I'd like to have a discussion, maybe through Vicki, could you just tell her?
Yeah, I will contact Vicki. She's not feeling well at the moment, so I have not called her back to inform.
No, don't worry about that. Oh, next week? So can we make sure we have a discussion this weekend?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay, so that's fine.
And you said you also have identified places for new trees to come in, to be put in?
We've discussed it. We've discussed a few people may make requests and say, I'd like to have a tree in my yard, but for the most part, we don't have a strict policy now that says automatically, this is some, this person gets first priority, or this person doesn't. So for instance, if you have a tree that's taken out of your property, that doesn't automatically mean you're the first person who gets a tree put in. It's usually on a year-by-year basis-
Yeah, good examples on there, where the best place to put it was not where it was taken out, it was further down to make it equal to where the others are.
Exactly, yeah. So, you know, so that's something-
Okay, but you will then bring to the board for review any proposed additional trees that you're gonna put in?
Correct.
Okay, fine.
Yeah. And that's a policy that's always been the case, but I just, but that was part of the recommendation in the letters. I wanted to address it. And Bob, just for the record, again, usually goes personally to someone's house and says, you know, do you want a tree removed that he feels is dangerous? And we just haven't had the backup of an official letter going out from the village to state that.
But if you think it's dangerous anyway, you're gonna go and take it out, right? We're not gonna, someone loves a tree, but it's dangerous for the community, we're not gonna let it stay there, right? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we do have, and Ian can back me up, we do have the, not only the ability, but the responsibility to, if we think a tree is dangerous within the 25 yards of that, 25 feet of the center line, and we identify it, and then don't do anything about it, because the owner says, says, well, no, I want that tree to stay put, and then we get a 70 mile an hour windstorm, and it goes down on his roof, we'll live it. So, that's, you know, we have to be careful. So as part of that protocol, it has to be understood that during a storm, trees come down and they have to be cleared. That doesn't mean there's any time to put a letter in the mail to an owner saying, oh, by the way, the tree that's now across the road out of your yard's being removed, it's-
All right, so the policy that describes the Shade Tree Committee, is it ready to be posted on the website as an official policy?
Well, I could clean up the language, but after, you know, explaining it to make sure it's good, but yeah.
All right, so can we just do that, or do you have a review with the board and a motion to put it on there?
I don't think that's necessary. I think I describe what's basically so-
Fine, so let's do it, then. Okay, good.
All right.
Leslie, any questions about the Shade Tree Committee?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so I just need a motion to appoint Bob Colacola to serve a two-year term on the Shade Tree Commission, and have myself and Kevin McGrane serve a one-year term on the Shade Tree Commission. The way that these are structured is on purpose, because with these new bylaws, we don't wanna have everyone coming up for approval.
Sure. So why don't you make that motion, and I'll second.
Okay, so I make the motion that Bob Colacola be appointed for a two-year term on the Shade Tree Commission, and Mike Herzog and Kevin McGrane be appointed for a one-year, for the one-year term on the Shade Tree Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Any else?
That's pretty much it for me.
Good. Leslie, anything you wanna add?
Uh, yeah, just one thing.
Yeah, sure.
Um, I spoke with Mr. Freed of the Millbrook Central School District, and in terms of the gazebo that was surveyed is on the school property. He is gonna be in touch with me again, but the Board of Education is gonna be discussing it. No particular date was given, but when any decisions are made, he'll get back to us.
Okay, very good. Yeah, let us know as soon as possible. So the community, we wanna make sure the community hears, you know, ahead of time what they're planning to do. Okay, very good. One last note, is there's an emergency blood shortage, and so there's a blood drive at St. Joseph's Parish Hall this July 18th. What is that? Is that Sunday? July 18th? Eight thirty to two thirty, St. Joseph's Parish Hall. So just to let you know, there's a real shortage of blood, and if you're eligible and you're willing, please go over to the parish hall and donate some blood. Yes, yes. Actually, open for comment, any comments?
You have, I don't know your code as well, but do you have a section of the tree boards anywhere in the code?
Yes, we do. And what we have done at a previous meeting is, we took the bylaws of how the Shade Tree Commission should operate out of that part of the code, and kept what elements are in the code under the chapter heading of trees. So-
If I'm online, I would be able to find it.
Yes.
And have a tree-
Yes, they do.
If you're in here and there, it's no intention of-
No, there's a-
Now, caveat is, we made that change last year, year and a half ago, Sarah. And so if you go online, do you see that change, or do you have to go to the new laws that are in place that we haven't updated the top code? So you should see that the code shows that says, we have a Shade Tree Commission, and that see the policy offline for the details of that.
That may be something coming up in town.
Yeah, okay, fine. Okay. Yeah, sure. We absolutely can. Okay. Next board meeting is Wednesday, August 11th. Hopefully, it's cooler that day. Would that like a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Have a good evening.